Call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda is a salute to the American flag.
I would like to say to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I make a motion we approve the agenda as written.
I will second, all in favor.
Aye. I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the last meeting as written.
I will second, all in favor.
Aye.
Okay, signing of the warrants, do you wish to discuss, do you want to hold them off till later or do you wish to discuss the ASYCC one before we sign?
Um, yeah, no, let's go ahead and discuss that.
Okay, um, we're going to be discussing with the warrants, um, we have a request for a donation from Acton Shapley Youth Conservation Corps for $22,000, um, and we're going to discuss how to deal with that. Um, I understand that they need the money to pay their staff and so I would, I would like to see it get paid out, um, so that they can continue to pay for materials and, uh, not materials, the homeowners do that, but for their staff and their, um, professionals. But we are in a bit of a budget crunch, so there is some concern.
Yeah, I have a concern because we just put a freeze on, um, all discretionary spending until money starts coming in, and this is the second request to have the payment early before the tax dollars come in this year. Um, and where we, the town voted in to have the road repaired and it started, that's $100,000 that comes out of the tax bills that come in, in October, and that's being spent now. Uh, the dump was approved to buy a compactor, they bought that, uh, it was less than what they asked for, it was only $7,000, but then they also are having it stalled, so that's already been spent out of last year's budget money. So I'm worried about cash flow. Uh, my opinion is we should wait until some, uh, tax money come in. If we can get the task commitment done, um, early enough in September, the banks will then pay all the payments for people to have the banks pay their taxes, and at that time then we have a better cash flow system, and that's when I think we should pay it.
Um, my concern is that Acton Shapley Youth Conservation Corps, they provide, um, a really vital service in the town, and I don't wish to have them be strapped for cash. I guess if we want to hold it off for a week and ask for a financial report from Bill Sherman and see where they are for cash and see if we can work out some sort of arrangement that way.
And also the auditors are coming in this week too, so we can see where we're at for cash flow also at that time.
Right.
So I, if we could table it till next week.
Okay, so let's, go ahead then with the-
I make a motion that we table the, uh, what's the name of it?
Acton Shapley Youth Conservation-
Acton Shapley Youth Conservation Donation until next Thursday's meeting.
Okay, I will second that, all in favor.
Aye.
So we will, if we take that out of the warrant, can we sign the remaining warrant with that being noted?
With that notation that you're gonna hold that one.
Okay, so-
The only thing is, is this is for salaries for all the people that are working there, and I don't know how, yeah, I think that's the thing, you need to talk with Bill Sherman.
Yeah, that's what we wanted to-
Find out whether or not, how much money they've got to work with. We don't want them to have to work and not be paid because we're sitting on the money.
Exactly, but what it is, what my concern is, is to make sure that we do have enough money to do this and still pay our own bills. And the other thing is, is they've already gotten their donation from Shapley, and we gave them our last donation in April, and their spending is during the summer, so if they got a Shapley donation and half of our donation from last year in April, then they should have enough until we know that we're physically, we're able to do this.
The only problem with the April donation though is that it was cut in half last year, so instead of the full 11,000, they only got 5,500 in April, so, uh-
Can I see, just for a second?
Yes, please.
I'll, I'll get the numbers for you of what they have to have.
Mm-hmm.
The amount they spend in salaries is about $56,000 this year, and when they got the $22,000, they made sure that they had good coverage at the ramps and they've got all the erosion kids already working.
Right.
So if it is gonna get totally curtailed, they'd have to lay off some kids and stop some of the projects.
Yeah, and that's not what I meant, right.
Because they can only do it in the summer.
Yeah.
And they, they expect to be paid next week like anybody else. I'll work with Bill, um, and get back with you about it, and, you know, maybe they can get with part of it and then get the other part later. We'll do the very best we can, I'll get you all the information as fast as I can, I might have it as early as Saturday when I come up here for the, uh-
Thirteenth Street.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
Thanks very much.
I'll sign, there's two, oh, I haven't signed the second one. I didn't think I had, but. All right, there is no old business, so moving on to new business, we have as the first item, a discussion about the Hebo-Hibo Road, and I believe Ms. Ricks, that you are spearheading this conversation, yes?
So, for those that don't know, um, the Hebo-Hibo Road is, has, was discontinued in 1937. Um, and we as property owners on that road, um, we have a piece of land that we put up for sale and we got a contract on it, we can't sell it now because it has no access according to the town. So we've been researching and trying to find the best way to have access granted to the property owners on the Hebo-Hibo Road. I believe that, that the property on there is also being taxed at a rate, I think there's, there's a different tax rate if you're, you have no access to your land, if, if it's not a buildable lot. So, um, so we've been doing a lot of research in what can we do, not only for ourselves, but for other property owners on the, the thing, and, um, I asked, Larissa and I were corresponding, well, Larissa was corresponding with MMA, and, um, so I guess we're here to, I, I have the copy of the letter that Bergen and Parkinson sent, um, in 2007 to, um, Chip Vannell and the Manning's, Members of Planning Board concerning, uh, they had someone that wanted to put a recreational retreat out on the Hebo-Hibo Road. It doesn't necessarily address the issue of the easement, he kinda didn't answer the question, and Ken Paul, who is supposed to be here tonight-
He's gonna be bouncing, the planning board's meeting right now.
Right.
He had some things he had to do there first, but he will be coming up.
Okay, um, and he, he's the one that gave me a copy of this letter and said that they really didn't answer the question then, but in the letter it says, "Discontinuance refers to extinguishing all or some of the public rights in a road by proclamation and procedure. For discontinuances to be effective, you must comply with several requirements, including the road must be an interest held for highway purposes, townway, or public easement," which it was, "two, notice must be given, and three, an order of discontinuance must be filed specifying location, names of abutting property owners, and amount of damages." Um, so, in doing all the research, the easiest way would, if the town can legally do it, and I think that's the question that we want you to bring, I guess, to your lawyer, not to MMA, is can the town say the road was not discontinued appropriately, um, and then rediscontinue it? The reason for that being, if it's discontinued before 1965, there, there maintains no easement. You abutters own right to the middle of the road, there's no easement, there's no utility easement, there's no public easement. Um, and so that was the question specifically, and I think we didn't get that specific question. We got a lot of answers to other questions, but we didn't get the answer to, can the town do that?
But the reason that we didn't get that specific answer Debbie is because the que- we did, and the answer was, why would we? And because the questions leading up to that were, that there is, because this road was discontinued in 1936-
Right.
It was recorded with the county as being discontinued in 1936.
Right.
There is no reason for the town to pursue this, and what the MMA said very clearly was, that if you feel that the road was discontinued inappropriately despite the record that is on, is with the county, that it was officially discontinued-
Right.
That the burden of proof on that lies with you, not with the town, that it is not-
Right.
In the town's interest to open this up. As far as the town is concerned, this road is discontinued, and it was done so appropriately, and it was recorded appropriately with the county in 1936. So then our next step that you and I discussed was the best way to grant what you're looking for, which is easements for these properties, is to form a road association with the other landowners on that road.
You don't have to form a road association to get easements, so that would just be an additional cost.
Well then, just working together, the, the town has no interest in this, and we have no require-
Well, I, I, that's where I-
And it's not, it's not a question of taxation either, you mentioned that if it's not a buildable lot, I would argue that this is a buildable lot, you simply don't have necessarily an easy ability to get a mortgage to build with, but there's nothing that I was-
You can't get a bu- Ken Paul, that's why he's supposed to-
He won't grant a building permit?
He won't grant a building permit to anybody on that road as long as there is not an easement and a, a utility and a public easement.
But then that becomes the responsibility of, so, and the other thing I asked you to do was to find out how many of these lots that are there now were there in 1936. Because if these lots were created after 1936, and more importantly, if the current owners purchased them after 1936, which we can only assume that most of them did, then that becomes a buyer's issue. The people that bought those lots did so knowing in theory that this was a discontinued way, and knowing in theory what that meant for them as owners.
Right, well, and until this issue came up, everyone up here thought that that was a, that there was a public easement. When I, when we came up here, people thought that, people that have property on there thought that, and until their lawyer or whatever, the, the own buyers or whatever, until they came up and spoke with, I believe, Ken, there was like, no, you have no, you have no way to access that property legally. You would have if they bought it. So, I, for me, I think it is in the town's interest to ask the question of the lawyers, and I'm not saying that you, you know, you're gonna get an answer that I will like, but to ask the question, can we say, because we know that it, it has to comply with all of those, I mean, you know, must be filed specifying a location-
Which it did.
The new road, um, names of abutting property owners, which it didn't, amounts of damages, which they didn't. Um, so I guess, I guess what I'm asking the selectmen to do is to go to your lawyer and just ask them, and I know that costs money-
Yes.
But if we can be quick and succinct, they've already addressed the issue here, well, not really the same issue, but, um-
What was the issue that they were addressing in that letter? Because I'm not familiar with this letter.
They were, um, would you like me to just read it, because it's confusing?
Is it short?
It's, um, "You have asked for our opinion concerning a road frontage issue with regard to a property owner's proposal to start a commercial enterprise on his property located on the Hebo-Hibo Road." Um, so, they really didn't give a good answer here, and Ken said they didn't give a good answer.
And who hired-
And the guy ended up not doing it.
Who hired this, these folks?
This is the town of Acton.
Okay, and what's the date on it?
This is, uh, March 14th, 2007.
All right.
Ken has this, he gave me.
Okay, and what did the planning board decide after getting that letter?
The guy never did it.
He withdrew his application.
I don't know, I, yeah, we'd have to ask Ken, though I'm not sure.
They want to build a camper for all of them.
Oh, okay, I remember that.
So, um, so I guess I'm asking, I'm asking the board to just inquire of the lawyers if, just present them with the information of, we know it was discontinued, um, and can, can the town do that? Can you do it?
Well, we've already done that, as Larissa told you, with the MMA, and that doesn't, we don't have to pay for those lawyers.
But they didn't answer the question-
Their que- their answer was, this is a, um, not a town issue, that it's more for your deed to get, that you bought land that didn't have a-
It's a town issue in that, in their answer, and I have all their answers, their, their answer didn't answer the question, can the town legally do that? It, why pursue it? It, why, I, I don't even wanna talk about it if the town can't do it. The reason that came up was between Chip and the planning board, Chip Vannell, Ken Paul, and Richard Nass are the ones that all suggested this, and, and so it's not like it's just coming from me.
But they also all suggested a road association. I mean, this-
No, they didn't.
Well, I know Ken did, that a road association, what you're looking for is individual landowners to grant easement to everyone that owns property on that road.
To create a runaway law.
That's what you're looking for.
But you don't need a road association to do that.
But it would be the most efficient way for you, if, if that process had been started a few months ago, you would have that in place now. That is going to be the most efficient way to deal with this situation for you as an individual landowner, because let's say that we contact our lawyer, and the lawyer says, "I guess it's legal for you to rediscontinue the road." Then we have to decide, well, do we want to do that? What does that open up for us to do so? And then we also have to wait until next June's town meeting to do so. What you're looking for is to be, and rightly so, looking for an ability to sell your property. By forming a road association, you will be able to do that more quickly and more easily.
Right, well, okay, we don't need to form a road association, road associations cost money, and that's, the whole point is that, at the time, all this got brought up, it would've been in time to do it at any of these town meetings that we've been having if the answer had, if we'd gotten the answer that you could discontinue the road. So I was just following up with that. So the question is, can the town do that? That, we didn't, we never got an answer as to whether, you, they answered back, why would you want to? Well, you would want to because you want the people on the Hebo-Hibo Road that have property to be able to build on it, to be able to utilize the land. And then you also got this letter from the town of Lebanon, asking you to put up a gate at the end of the Hebo-Hibo Road. And then you have all these people in this town that think that's been a public, there's been a public right of way, and people have used it for snowmobiling and for four-wheeling and for mudding, and people have used that, you've got someone with a gravel pit in there that doesn't own to the Milton Mills Road, so he doesn't have legal access to get those, that, those trucks eat in and out, and I understand it's a private issue, but-
That'd be the landowners would have to stop that.
Right.
Because it's privately owned now.
And they clearly don't want to.
And I question the fact that it says in your, in the discontinuance, subject to gates and bars. Well, if, if the town legally discontinues the road, it doesn't say that, in the main municipal road manual, it doesn't say you can put it, subject to gates and bars, you can put, you can put that it kept an easement, but if you discontinued the road, you have no right to put up gates and bars.
What were, but what were the laws governing discontinuance in 1936, Debbie? Because that's when the road was discontinued. So, I guess, did you, were you able to find out how many actual parcels of land were on the road in 1936?
No, 1853.
Okay, I guess that really becomes though important Debbie, because if-
Right, in 1853, there were two.
Okay, chances are there might not have been so many more of them in 1936, I mean-
But we don't know that.
But we could find that out first, and that's what I suggested you do first, was because if there were only two-
I've tried.
There has to be record of who, of, even if you just look up deeds, there ha- like, when was your deed established?
I don't know that.
It should be on your deed. So if you look at your deed, if, when did you purchase the property? Okay, so, in theory, you purchased it from someone-
Right, right.
And on your deed will be that record.
Oh, I understand that, right.
So I guess that would be what I would encourage you to do. I mean, when you purchased the property in 1997, and I understand that it would be very frustrating to have come up and asked, you know, what's the situation with this road, and be told something that turned out not to be true, but it doesn't change what was true when you purchased the property. And what was true when you purchased the property was that this was a discontinued road, and that you as a purchaser understood that you therefore owned to the center of the road, and it should be in your deed.
Right.
So, that is, that is where it stands, is that the people that purchased those lots on that road in their deed, it should say that you own to the center of the road.
Okay, so, so at this point, the selectmen won't ask any questions, and so when the assessor comes, I'm gonna ask the assessor-
Please do.
-to make sure that I'm only being taxed on a non-buildable lot-
Absolutely.
As long, and I can notify the other people on the road-
Please do.
-that they will be doing the same thing, and that we don't have any help from the selectmen. Thank you.
Okay, next item of business is a announcement of a discretionary spending freeze.
Yeah, as I said earlier, we're concerned about cash flow, have, not getting the figures yet, uh, from last year. Uh, hopefully we'll have those this week, because they're gonna be in here Wednesday and Thursday, and with the spending of next year's budget items already, uh, so we put a freeze on all discretionary spending to all department heads, and, uh, we'll be following through on that until we are, until we know better exactly what we have to spend.
That of course does not include salaries, it does not include necessary items, you know, should things come up like the fire trucks, should it need something to be repaired on it in order to operate, that's not discretionary. Um, but mostly, especially here at the town hall, we'll be watching that and making sure that those don't go out.
If you can't live without it, then that's not, then it, you know.
And salaries certainly are not affected. Next item, drug testing.
Um, we have contacted the drug company, um, because of an issue that came up when I, my first day in, we weren't able to find the, um, the drug testing files. So we contacted the drug company, and we found out that nobody had been tested since last November. And the reason for that was, we had joined a pool with Shapley, and it's a pool where they draw names out, and it seems like the folks in Shapley were being tested all the time and the folks in Acton weren't. So I got in touch with, um, the chief and the gentleman in charge of the transfer station, and told them that if we had 15 people in this drug testing, um, group, that we could go on our own where only names from Acton would be pulled out. So both departments have agreed to add their employees onto the drug testing policy, so we will be testing, um, anybody in those departments, uh, from, as soon as we get this in place, and it should be very soon. There's no additional cost to the program, us, in us having our own pool, the only additional cost will, there'd be, there will be more testing done, so it's, I believe it's $45 per test. So last year we spent one, we spent $45, had one person tested, so we will be spending more because we're gonna have more people tested, but, uh, so that's in place, and, uh, we should have that, uh, starting up pretty soon.
Yes, and we should all be pretty happy about that. All right, next is number four, we are interviewing for our revaluation. We have, um, six bids came in from companies interested in performing the revale. We are interviewing the three lowest bidders tomorrow. Um, we will have interviews at nine, at 10:15, and at 11:30. People are certainly welcome to come in and listen to those interviews if they wish. Um, and if we are, we have another company that we are also interested in interviewing that we will look at doing next week, the two highest bidders, one of which bid over the price that was voted in at town meeting, have been sent letters saying, "Thank you for your time and effort, but we are not interested in your proposal." So we have those four, um, interviews to look forward to, and we will be looking to, I'm hoping to move forward on, um, awarding the bid in the next week or so, so that we can get moving with the project. Um, and we needed to wait on the interviews though, turns out that we didn't actually have the loan solidified in place. Um, we had an agreement on a loan, but it had not been signed, so thankfully that was caught, thank you Ted. And Ted, um, the bank rates had gone up since then, but SIS and Ted were able to work out an agreement to commit to the, the interest rate that had been voted on at town meeting, so that worked out well. So that loan will be being signed, I also assume in the next week or so.
The attorney has the paperwork, he has to write up the actual loan because it's, involves taxes, and we just sent him, uh, yesterday, um, the, um, warrant article that was voted on at town meeting to approve the money, and so he should have the paperwork ready for us to sign, um, about midweek next week.
Right.
Um, to, so you understand, it wa- it was done correctly, they got the approval, they got the interest rate, and, um, were ready to go on this, and that's the figures that they used on the warrant article, but the interest rate only held for 30 days, and because of the timeline with the town meeting and everything else, that 30 days was gone, so when I called them up, interest rate had gone up, and I said, "Well, I've got a town warrant where the town voted, and if we can't get that same interest rate and that same payment, we gotta go back before the town in order to get the money to do this." So they took a day or two and, uh, called back and said, "Yes, we will honor the agreement that we gave to the selectmen before."
So that will be going forward and looking forward to hiring a very competent and, um, capable company. Next one is tomorrow morning, Friday, um, 8:00 AM, we will be holding a staff meeting here in the town hall. It of course is a public meeting, we've posted it on the website, posted it on the cable channel, um, and we're announcing it now, so anyone is welcome to come and listen to us from 8 to 8:45, chat with our staff. Um, so that will be happening tomorrow.
It's just for, um, town hall staff.
Yep. All right, we have some appointments that we still, um, are catching up. One of them is our constable, who very diligently has been making sure that we do not neglect to appoint him, which we did not mean to do, so that will be one of them, and then we have two Mary Grant Nature Preserve members that, um, needed to be appointed again as well. They're, we thought that their, um, appointments were good until 2012, but it turns out that they were not, so, um-
I make a motion, we appoint Robert Anderson to constable from June 30th, 2000, I'm sorry, until June 30th, 2011.
I will second, all in favor.
Aye. Do you want me to respond? I make a motion that we appoint Dan Archball to the Mary Grant Nature Preserve member until July 15th, um, nope, until July 30th, 2011.
Uh, second that to-
Yes.
All in favor.
Aye. And I make a motion that we appoint Ethan Current as a Mary Grant Nature Preserve member until June 30th, 2011.
I will second that, and I've cleared it with Lorraine, he is my husband, but whereas it's not a paid position, or really no glamour involved in any way, there's no conflict of interest. I'll in favor.
Aye.
Thank you, Lorraine. Um, next, Mr. Long wished to be on the agenda.
Uh, Dennis Long, first off, I'd like to thank the selectmen for putting me on the agenda tonight. Uh, there's a couple issues I'd like to talk about. Uh, one, uh, basically since, uh, my term is, uh, was over, uh, word out of the town hall, uh, has been that I have, uh, taken, uh, files, uh, property, uh, whatever from the town hall before I left, and-
Can I clarify that, Dennis? Um, what happened was my first day in here, um, when Jennifer was taking me around and giving me the keys and showing me where everything was, we opened up the two-row file cabinet in the selectmen's office, and she said the drug, uh, files were in there. Um, so what we did is we contacted, because they were gone, so we contacted MMA, and they said what we needed to do was to, uh, call you and call Tony, and, um, you both said that you didn't have them, and we're not accusing you of taking them. And then we had to write a letter, and if you look at the letter that we sent you, it just quotes the law that if you have anything from your term that you were in the office that belongs to the town to bring it back. We did that because the files are missing, and, and that's, you know, not a good thing to have happen, and, and, you know, everything has to be kept in such a period of time. So we did that to cover ourselves, but because of that, finding that out, we were able to find out more about our drug program and, and acted quickly on something that I probably wouldn't have been made aware of for months down the road. So we're not accusing anybody of taking anything, it could've been misplaced, it, you know, and, and like I said, we can get it all back from, from the drug company, because they did the testing and then they sent us the records. But because the files were not where they were supposed to be, and neither one of you guys knew where they were, we had to do that letter writing according to MMA, so we're not accusing you of anything.
But, uh, to finish, I appreciate what you're saying Ted, um, the word out of the town hall around town was that I had taken these things, amongst other things. And I had said, "Well, that's absolutely ridiculous, uh, number one, why would I want any drug testing files? Uh, I would have nothing to gain or to lose, uh, by taking them." Uh, and it's like I told Jennifer Rue when she called me, uh, and the amount of time that I'd been here, uh, I've never looked at them.
Yeah.
When I started as selectman, uh, Bernard Yetton, and, um, some other relatives-
Okay, we, I-
Worked for the town, and-
Yeah, that's, I'm, I'm not gonna tell her.
That's, I'm not going to tolerate that, okay?
No, what I'm saying is, this is why, this is why I stayed.
Nothing came out of the office from Larissa or I. When we found out it was missing, we did everything.
I didn't say we did, Ted.
I know, but I don't want to go into history and, and, and personalities. I mean, if you have, if you want to talk about just you, but I don't want to...
That's what I'm talking about.
I think his point was that he didn't look at them because he didn't want the conflict of interest because he had family members in them.
That, that was where I was going with that.
Okay, we're just, you know, the history, I just wanted to make sure that you, you understand that I don't want to go back to the history of it.
I'm not doing that.
Okay, I apologize.
What, what I was going to say was, I had told Tony and Nancy at the time that I didn't want anything to do with the drug testing files.
Okay.
Because I didn't want to be a part of any conflict of interest. And that's why I always stayed out of them.
Well, that's good.
And, and I never did. I couldn't even tell you what a form looked like. So, that's it, and, and I didn't, and I didn't say that you or Larissa were telling around town that I took these. I said, "Out of the town hall."
Yeah.
Okay?
But I wanted to make it clear, it didn't come on us. We did what we needed to do legally, and we weren't accusing anybody of anything. We were just making sure that the fact that those files were missing was covered legally, so that if anybody should come and question, "Where are they?", we would have an answer for them.
But your letter, you have to excuse me because I didn't, I do have my glasses.
That, that was, um...
I don't see so good with my glasses.
That was suggested by MMA. That's, they told us how to write that.
The, the selectmen have asked me to write to you and request that you return any files or property information that belongs to the town of Acton. And what that implies is, at least to me, isn't saying, it isn't saying, "If you have anything," they're asking for me to return something. And I can't return something that, or anything, because I didn't take anything. And I would just to clarify here tonight, and, and I guess that's my issue, because of a lot of talk around the community, that I have taken stuff. And I would like to, like you said, clarify that here in public, that the selectmen are saying that that's true.
Yep. All we know is we couldn't find the file, and then we had to cover it, but the file can be recovered. Because the company that supplied us with the initial file still has all the records, so we can get whatever was in that file. So, it's, it's a non-issue as far as I'm concerned, and, and I apologize if the letter wasn't written the way, you took it differently than how we meant it, is my point, I guess.
You agree with that, Larissa?
The letter should have said that you may have, not that you do have. The, it is certainly, the town needs to pursue if something has sent, I mean, these are, they were locked because they are confidential. And so, we are required to pursue their return. And that is, the letter is the first step in that process, that they do need to find the way back. And it should be very clear to the public that we are not accusing anyone of taking the files. We are just simply trying to find them. We have searched the town hall for them. They are not here. And I am sure that they, like Ted said, that they could have simply been misplaced. We will continue to look for them here. But we will also, you know, we need to continue to pursue where else they may be. And it's not just simply you that were sent a letter. You know, we sent the letter to the two people that had keys to the cabinet. And we will see what happens from there. I'm sure that they will come back. I don't think it's going to be an issue from here.
Well, I know you sent a letter to Tony, so, because he called me.
You two were the key, the ones that had the keys, so that's what they told us to do.
The only ones that you had the keys, that you know how many keys it were for. You really, you really don't know how many keys.
We assume that as a, as a filing cabinet, that they come with two keys and that there were two keys.
The other thing, and again, to squelch rumors, I would also like to ask if this is true or if this is not true. My evaluation on my property is being investigated?
The valuation, as, we discussed this back in May with the assessor, the, as the board.
Whenever it was, I don't remember when it was.
The board is charged with verifying all changes in assessment.
Right.
So, what, all that has happened is that in the same way that any time a board member's assessment changes, the other board members are required to make sure that that assessment is valid. So, that no one in town can say that the position is being abused.
Which we did.
Right, and the assessing agent, Mr. Lissard, has gone over the document with me back in May and with Ted this week. And has shown that because the assessment was originally on a two-point-oh-seven acre lot, with each acre being assessed at fifty thousand, which is incorrect. If you have a two-acre lot, each acre is supposed to be assessed at twenty thousand. And so, what Mr. Lissard did was he recognized that the lot falls within the shoreline zone, and he changed the lot size to the point-nine-three-two acres, or something like that. That is custom to the neighborhood that it's in, with the fifty thousand dollar assessed value on that size only. So, it did drop the, the assessed value, but it did so legitimately. It is something that, and we discussed this as a previous board back in May. You know, could we establish a board policy where any seated board member's assessment changes would go through the Board of Assessment review? So, that there would be no reason for the public to have an outcry or to be suspicious or for there to be any, any thoughts of wrongdoing. And we agreed to pursue that after the election, so it didn't look political, which I think was the appropriate thing to do. MMA, however, when I have brought that up with them since July first, they have made it very clear that we cannot do that. That whether it's by, if we were to do so, if we were to set up a policy, where seated board members needed to have changes in their assessment be overseen by the Board of Assessment Review. Which was my suggestion, because it seemed like they would be an outside board. That then they are not able to function in their actual capacity as a Board of Assessment Review, should the board member disagree with the assessment that's given. And that it's not in their purview anyway. And that when seated board members have changes in assessment, they, like everyone else, have those changes looked at by the entire board when we do tax commitment. The assessing agent presents us at tax commitment time with a list of the changes in assessed values for the year. And we, as a full board, it, we are beholden to the public to look at those, to make sure that they were done justly and equitably before we sign tax commitment. So, that is the time that we would check those things.
I, I contacted Mr. Lissard because I wanted the answers for myself, and he assured me that everything was done completely legally. And explained it to me and showed me properties and, and, you know, the, the difference with the fifty thousand times the two acres as opposed to, you know, point-eight-nine, I think is, is the other one. And that's all he did. So, everything was done legally and, you know, it, it's already in there. And then, like Larissa said, we sign in on, on commitment, so we're not looking to change anything. We cannot change it because it's the tax law, so it's state tax law, so we cannot change to have selectmen that are sitting in the job can't fix their own, you know, have somebody come in and look at their own land. But he didn't do anything wrong, completely legal. He says that it'll undergo any kind of scrutiny, because I asked him that, because I know it's, you know, we've had issues before. And so, I said to him, "So, if, if somebody comes on and does a complete investigation into this, you're sure everything was done legally?" And he said, "Absolutely." So, to me, it's, it's a non-issue.
Well, again, that's another thing that's been around town, and I understand there's nothing you do about gossip, but obviously, the information comes out of the town hall. To make it very clear, again, I'd like to make this point very clear. That four years ago, when they jumped my evaluation, back when Purvis was the assessor. I disagreed with it, and I was told by the selectman at the time, "Well, that's the way it was." And I didn't really understand the whole process, so I left it, and...
Do you now going through what you, what happened? Do you know, do you know how they changed it?
Back then?
Yeah.
Arbitrarily.
No, but I mean, was, is that what they...
When it was increased.
Is that what they changed?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And, so, what, what happened was this year, just so everybody knows, I had pulled, I had paid all my taxes, my tax bill I got in October. So, this didn't affect at all what I paid in tax dollars. Okay.
Now, is this, is this the land where your houses, or is this a separate lot?
The separate.
Yeah, okay, because it's a twenty-acre lot, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you would, you would be in charge quite a bit of money for a, a raw lot.
Yeah, and, so, like I said, to be very clear, I didn't save any money by the Joel aside dropping the valuation, because I paid the full. And if it ends up that the Joel aside or the selectmen or whoever has second thought, feel free to put it back to where it was. And I'll just address it through an abatement or something this coming year, you know?
I think that what, one of the things that, where we can't establish a policy, it's, we can't, you know, have an ordinance. I think one of the things that it has simply brought up this, and it's not just you, other board members and previous boards have had reductions as well. That it is something that we as a board, and hopefully, future boards, will simply say, "Okay, quarterly, we're going to just review all assessment changes, regardless of who they're for. We're just going to review them, we'll go over them with the assessing agent and see why the things were changed." Because it, it is putting a lot of authority in the assessing agent. We, I mean, legally, we are the assessors. We've finished signing off. But by only signing off on assessment changes once a year at tax commitment, there's not a lot of oversight going on with that department. So, I think that it just has simply brought forward, "All right, maybe this is a place that for greater transparency and to prevent any unfortunate rumors or accusations in the future. If the public knows that we as a board are overseeing them quarterly, then that will help fix those problems in the future."
As far as I'm concerned, Dennis, it was done completely legally, and I will not vote to change it to anything. Although, I can't guarantee what the new appraisers will do, so...
What they do is they do. But if I could just take another minute and explain why my property came up at all to begin with. There were several residents came in and questioned a piece of property, the valuation on it, wanted to know what it was. And it was Judy Shane's property. And so, I looked at it, and the valuation was approximately a hundred thousand dollars. And I believe it was ninety-eight acres. And I'm, and I says to myself, "Jeez, something ain't right here. I own about twenty acres, and that's what mine's valued at." You know, it just didn't seem right to me. So, I said to the assessing people, I says, "Something isn't right here. I don't know if mine's way too high, hers is too low, maybe they're both too low. I got no idea what's going on." And if it hadn't been valued the same, it probably wouldn't have, my property wouldn't even, even been brought up. And so, I didn't do it to change my value, just like something is, is inequable, you know? So, coming back with that, Joel aside did say that my value was too high. And with Judy Shane's property, that she had ninety-eight acres, all but two acres was in tree growth. And which obviously, when it's in tree growth, the value is, you know, taxable value is a lot less.
Right, because when you want to sell it and develop it, you have to pay all the back taxes.
Exactly. So, the whole thing was explained, and this is why I explained to the people that came in and asked about it, that it was in tree growth and blah, blah, blah. So, that's how the whole situation ever came up to begin with, just because the numbers, that the value was the same. And to have eighty acres difference, it just, there's a quick look, you know, it's like, "What's going on?", you know what I mean? Something's not equitable here.
How come we convinced you to put your twenty acres in tree growth?
No. So, anyway, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Okay, the next, yes, please come up.
Probably the most controversial paperwork in town hall would be the drug testing paperwork. And to avoid something like this happening again, I would like to merely suggest that one of the selectmen receive all of the paperwork that's mailed into town hall from Georgia or Sanford or wherever. And that that one individual be responsible for filing it and the whole nine yards. For the, the contact person, everything.
Hey, I, I agree.
That takes the gloom out of the whole doggone thing, and there's only one person responsible. There should be only one key.
Right.
Well, we had, in the past, we did have one board member each time was the contact person and was the point of reference. I, I understand what you're saying about the key. Our plan moving forward, drug testing is personnel issues.
That's right.
So, we are actually planning on moving the drug testing information out of the hands of the select board and moving it into the personnel files to be held by one person in the town hall only, in a locked cabinet with other personnel files information. So, that it is not going to be in the hands of a rotating board, that it will be in the hands of an appointed person in the town that will maintain them as part of personnel files. And that they will be, you know, not in individuals' personnel files, but that the drug testing information will come into that one person, will go into the personnel files to be maintained by that one person. I agree. If there's only one key and one person accountable for them, then this doesn't come up again.
And if you were to scrutinize the individual to the nth degree for conflict of interest.
Well, if you remember last week, we put in a new policy where any time the board wants to get into personnel files, we have to go into executive session, mention who it is, and we have to have a majority vote in order to take them. So, the same thing will happen with the drug testing, goes right into those personnel files. Of course, if somebody were to come back with an issue, then that person that's in charge would have to let us know, then we'd have to go to a, a executive session, "Okay, let us see it." So, it would be dealt with right away. But we won't have access to those files unless there is, it's really necessary. But yeah, I agree with you. I, I think it's a great idea, and thank you for that.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is an MMA ballot. Each year, the municipalities need to vote for a vice president of the MMA and direct, three directors for the executive committee members. And this year, we have two choices for vice president. We have one that's proposed by the MMA nominating committee, which is Sophia Wilson. She's the town manager of the town of Brownville. And then, nominated by petition is Clint DeShen, town manager of the town of Herman. And there are three people vying for the three spots on the nom, on the executive committee. Michelle Beal, town manager of the town of Maccas, Marston Lovell, councillor of the city of Saco, and Robert Yan Dau, town manager of the town of York.
Are you familiar with how this person was nominated by petition?
I am not.
Would it be, have to be members of MMA, so it would be people in, like town managers and selectmen and things like that, that would have to sign the visit, the petition?
I am not sure. We have a list of, we have sketches of them. So, Clint DeShen has been a town manager from two thousand two until the present. He's the, on the board of directors for the irreparable, irrefutable trust that manages a public garden for the benefit of Herman residents. He was the town manager of the town of Bradford from ninety-nine to two thousand two. He was been on the executive committee from two thousand five to two thousand nine. He's...
On MMA's executive?
Yep. MMA Strategic and Finance Committee, MMA Property and Casualty Pool Director, Board of Directors, Working Consensation Board of Trustees, MMA Legislative Policy Committee Co-Member for thirty-two senate district. Co-Chair of Policy Working Group to Review MDOT Road Classifications, that's a group that's meeting now. Appointed to Governor's Committee to Research Excise Tax Law. He's a graduate of the Bangor Region Leadership Institute. It goes on and on.
Okay.
And Sophia Wilson has equally prestigious qualifications. So, I don't have, and, we can leave it blank, where we don't have a knowledgeable vote? Is it perhaps best to not vote if we don't know what we're, I think so as well?
I, I make a motion, we vote for the three that were proposed by MMA nomin, nominating committee for director's position of three terms.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye. I'll leave it here.
That's okay. Just need one.
This is my first one of these.
Okay.
This is coming from Main Central Power. They have to ask permission to put a vote in there?
Yes, if the, um, yes, they do.
Okay. Okay.
The next one is a poll permit application, um, when they wish to put up a new telephone poll or utility poll, they need to have permission from us to do so, and they pay us a fee as well, do they not?
They usually do, but, um, this is, uh, Fairpoint does, and Verizon does, but this is CMP, and they aren't, didn't send any money.
Well, I, I don't know how I feel about that.
CMP isn't in the habit of paying, apparently.
No, I think what it is, is CMP, if somebody else knows, correct me, CMP is in charge of putting the polls in, and then the telephone company is in charge of maintaining it afterwards, so that's why they, they pay the fee.
Could be.
Yeah.
But it's a whole log-in road, and because I couldn't identify that, I called CMP, and it is the Lebanon road, the one down from, I mean Mills, going to Lebanon.
Okay.
I make a motion that we accept a location permit for CMP.
I will second that, all in favor.
Aye, we see him.
Um-
One minute.
Or two, one for us, one for them.
All right, then we will open it up to the public, is there any other business? Ms. Seeker?
Barbara Seeker, I have two things. The first is, there will be a candidate's night on Tuesday, August third, at seven PM here at Town Hall. The second one is, um, I'm getting a group together to have a picnic in the park for the town, the whole town. Everyone's invited. It's gonna be held at the Mary Grant Preserve on Sam Page Road, Saturday, August seventh, at one PM. Uh, you have to bring your own lawn chairs, there'll be food there, entertainment, games, music, dancing, and raffles. And if anyone has any suggestions, I'm open. I'm looking for ladies to submit pies for a pie testing, uh, contest, and I'd like some men to judge the pies.
Can men bake too?
No.
No, the men aren't allowed to bake?
This is a ladies', uh, this is-
Oh, I don't think we can do that, Barbara.
Why can't I? The men are gonna be judges.
Discrimination?
Discrimination, well, I'm sorry, that's, I'm discriminating. Pardon me? Mary, uh, the Mary Grant Committee's having, um, a meeting on Tuesday night at five o'clock here at Town Hall. Anybody wants to attend, make suggestions, and I suppose you can show up and say you want men to be able to bake pies.
Well, just so you know, the, the chair of the Mary Grant Preserve, Eric Gallagher, makes a mean blueberry rhubarb pie, and he may take exception to your rule here.
Well, if he has to cook on that day, he may not.
All right.
We'll see what happens, we'll iron it all out on Tuesday, and anybody's welcome with their suggestions.
I'd like croquet, please.
Pardon me?
I would like to see croquet.
Like croquet?
Yes.
You plan on hitting someone with a ball?
No, it's a very genteel game, croquet.
Okay, I think that, um, David Cody is gonna be in charge of the game, so you can take that up with him.
Croquet, please, Mr. Cody.
Thank you.
Any other business from anyone? Mr. Maury.
Hi, my name's Michael Maury. I don't usually come to these meetings, they've been pretty rotten as of lately, watching them on the TV, they haven't really been very interesting. But I do have a couple of concerns that I'd like to see addressed. Um, number one, with all the election problems that we've been having, Channel Twelve has agreed that they would broadcast our elections, as well as some of our other business here in the town, on their TV channel, as well as Twenty-Six, and they would do it for free. So I think that reaching out to get more people informed has been a good thing. I think the television has helped, as you can see by the voter turnout that we've had in these last elections, that it's really made a significant difference. So I think by putting it on Twelve, we're gonna get much more response as well through the citizens of Acton. Excuse me.
To that, to that, Channel Twelve is able to be seen by all of the people in Acton that have MetriCast.
Yes.
So it's, it is Sanford's public access channel, but we have access to it?
Yes, and they've agreed, and it has a much bigger audience, 'cause you got Acton, you got Lebanon, you got Sanford, uh, such things as postings like for the treasurer's job, maybe something you'd be interested in putting on there where you're getting a wider audience, more people may apply for it. My second concern is, I came here today, and I spoke with the selectmen earlier, there's been people coming in and out of this Town Hall at all hours of night. Uh, the night before the election, for the recall, I came by here at about eleven-thirty, and there was a car in the parking lot, and I'm gonna respect what I was asked today not to use no names. I ended up, I called the state police, 'cause this car was here till after one o'clock in the morning. And they ran the car, and they came inside and spoke to someone, and it was supposedly someone who had access, permission to be here. I would hope that this board would set up some type of policy to manage who is in and out of this Town Hall at one o'clock in the morning. I called today the state police to find out who was here, in fact, and the trooper wasn't working, who I had spoke with, his name was Trooper Smith. But I made the call June twenty-ninth at twelve forty-five in the morning, and when the police responded, the person was still here in the Acton Town Hall. Uh, I think we really need to set some type of policy as to what hours people can be in here. If we have an emergency in the town, or something that really needs to be taken care of, I agree, our select people should be in here at that time of the morning to help the citizens out. They are the overseers of the town. But I disagree with someone coming in here at one o'clock in the morning, whether it's, I was, you know, made aware, I tell you, sometimes a treasurer comes in here late nights. I don't see any position here that requires third shift qualifications, whether it be selectmen, whether it be treasurer, whether it be cable crew, there's no reason for them to be here at that time of night. That car was in this parking lot from a little past eleven o'clock to almost one-thirty in the morning. And I believe the people know who they were that were in here. And, uh, I'm gonna respect your wishes, and I'm not gonna say names, but I've already heard some other people dropping names tonight, you should please stop the other people. If I'm not gonna mention names, I would expect other people not to mention names, when they're talking about tax issues, personnel issues, no matter what it is.
Yeah.
I think that it should be for everyone, not just for me.
I would agree, Mr. Maury, I think people have been-
So, but I would really like to see you use Acton, set, you know, I used the wrong words here today when I spoke to you, because I shouldn't have said set hours. We don't need set hours, we need a policy as to when the selectmen should be here, or anyone else. There's nobody here that should be here at that time of night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maury. The only thing, Mr. Maury, when we discussed this earlier, uh, we will check with MMA about whether or not we even have the authority to do that, that there are, um, we will look into it. I don't know if there, we have the authority to do that, and if we, we will look into it, and let you know by next week what the answer to that is, and-
Well, like I say, set, set hour is one thing, a policy is another. Someone should be aware, I mean, I don't know, at the school, for instance, Andy, if somebody goes to the school at night, is anybody aware that somebody is there? So, if somebody had a heart attack, God forbid, I mean, if somebody was here at one in the morning, they walked out in the parking lot and had a heart attack, and you don't find them till five AM the next morning when it's daylight, and that's a pretty big liability on the town. I really don't believe that people should be in here at that time of night, unless there is an emergency, a snow emergency, a weather emergency, uh, voting, you know, when we hear voting, you have people that are counting the votes, those are occasions where they need to be here. I don't see any reason for anyone to be in this Town Hall at eleven o'clock at night and stay here till one-thirty in the morning. And if it's official business, I mean, I'd like to see what that business was, it's public information. I'll come in and sign a paper and show me what they were doing here at that time of night, why they should be here, because I just don't believe that you're doing anything constructive at those hours of the morning.
Okay, well, we heard you, and what we'll do is, we will call MMA and find out if we can make any policy, or if we can control the hours, 'cause we have to remember this is a town building.
Correct.
Um, and if we can, then we'll go forward with it, and, and we'll get back to you.
From a liability perspective.
Thank you very much.
Two things.
Yeah.
Uh, one, uh, as far as the school's concerned, as you know very well, Ted, uh, that place is open to any employee there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and there is no restrictions when they come and go. And, being the facilities director there for many, many years, uh, it's very surprising, uh, sometimes when people do go in there to do work, as you very well know-
Yeah.
-as a former employee. The second thing is a reference of, um, somebody getting up and speaking about personnel issues, uh, using names of people with issues or whatever. Uh, I'm basically the only one that got up and spoke prior to this, and I did not do that at all, so, uh, okay.
We as a town are going to agree to leave personal names and identifying features out of controversial topics whenever we can, because... Oh, we need to change our tape, Mr. Hodgson. No, we actually outlawed that a couple of years ago in an ordinance.
Map hold.
Oh, map holdings, sorry, where was I? Sorry, how embarrassing. All right, Mr. Hodgson, you're on.
Uh, I would just like to say that people who find fault with the hours that someone might be putting in here, that's volunteering their services, which amount to quite a number of hours a week, depending on how many meetings are held here in town, I think that's pretty inappropriate, and, uh, I would urge anybody that wants to find fault with that to try to find some volunteers that will put in those kind of hours in an attempt to get a job done that's very much needed.
Thank you, Mr. Hodgson. Let us, let us hope that the concern is, as was stated, that it is also a safety issue, that should somebody be here in those early morning hours, and there's no one else available, that we are concerned for their personal safety, as well as for the liability towards the town, should they, something happened to them in the building in those late hours. Let's hope that that is the intent behind the, the comment.
Howdy.
Hi. I just wanted, first, I wanted to save Mr. Maury a phone call, because that was my car.
Just state your name.
Carol Long.
Thank you.
Um, I was up there working on cable business, and, um, that's a regular habit of mine, after my daughter goes to bed, coming up and working from ten to twelve-one, and I think Sherry does the same thing, having children, she comes up, you know, after Ally goes to bed.
Right.
Um, and that has been a regular practice of mine over the past year, trying to get caught up on things, and, and I just wanted to let you know that that was my car, and I, I think actually I might have told Larissa that the state police visited me, maybe not, I told-
You told me.
Ted, okay, I knew I told one of you, that the state police had visited me, um, while I was here. So I just wanted you to know that it was me, and I was in the cable room, and, um, I don't have access to anything but the cable.
Thank you.
Hello, Jerry Smith, treasurer, and yes, I am here quite regularly on a, on quite, on a regular basis here, quite late. Um, I do it for several reasons, um, one is, as Carol said, my child, there's a lot of times where if she's sick during the day, or she doesn't have daycare, where I tend to flex my hours, and I work at night rather than during the day, so that I can be home with my child, um, and not pay to daycare as if my, like, my daycare is on vacation this week, so it's easier for me to work at night while my husband is at home with my child, rather than to pay my daycare her vacation, as well as pay somebody else to watch my child. So I do come here at night. I have a button in my office that if, if I have any trouble, I push the button and it immediately goes directly to the state police, it's a, um, alarm button, and quite frequently, I take that out with me to the car, so that if I run into an issue on my way out to the car, um, that I will have some sort of, somebody coming to help me. Um, there's also a panic button on my car remote, which I have my hand on, just in case. I get a lot of work done at night after hours. I spend a lot of time during the day putting out fires from people who request a lot of information, and, and I don't have any issue with that, that's my job. Um, but when it comes down to it, there are times where I just need to focus, and I focus best at night. I've spent eleven years dispatching, um, where I worked second and third shift. I just focus better at night, and that's why I'm here late at night. There's an alarm on the door, so you can tell when I come in and go out, um, and I don't have access to the selectmen's office, I only have access to myself, I don't have access to the tax collector's office, I have access to Lorraine's office, so that I can use the copier, um, and my own, so, that's basically, I just want to clear that up, Mr. Maury.
Thank you.
Any other business? Mr. Mishu.
I've been wondering for the past six months or so, um, there's been a lot of changes going on in town, in the school. We've had several school board members changed and so forth, as you know, Ted.
You miss me?
Not yet. Um, we've also lost a superintendent, we have a new one, we had an interim and a, a permanent replacement and so forth. There've been several changes here at the, at the selectmen's office. Has anybody in the past five or six years, uh, looked at doing an independent auditor? You know, getting a second set of eyes, looking at the books, other than just the one auditor?
Um, not to my knowledge. What I will say is that when we went out to bid this year, we sent out requests to six different firms, I think it was six total, that were in, from Portland and Vittiford, and, um, we only had two return with any interest, and one of whom was not familiar with our software program at all, um, and therefore was not a good candidate, which is why we stuck with the auditor that we have now, 'cause it was really the only viable one. I think that, um, I under, I think that it would be nice if we had an independent audit, a one-time independent audit done, um, because of the, all the changeover, we'll have had two different treasurers within two years, we will have had multiple different board members within those same three, two, three years. Um, it will be a question of seeing if anyone is willing to do so, because we had such poor interest when we went out to bid this last time. Now, if we went out to bid for just a one-time project, we might get more interest from that. Um, but I don't know who, I'm not sure, quite sure who we are going to find to do that audit.
Yeah, I, I agree, I mean, you may have had poor interest, whether the ads just weren't noticed or whatever, so, you know, meaning the lack of returns for, for the bid, for the, for the audit. You know, my, my question is just that, a one-time audit, I mean, even running this by, uh, the current auditor, if-
I did talk to him.
If he's comfortable with his work, I mean, he, he wouldn't have, uh, any problem somebody going over it.
Yeah, I talked to Mrs. Smith this week, uh, because we weren't sure, he knew that, uh, Sherry was leaving, but Sherry had already told him she was leaving, and he said, in this situation, uh, whether it be a tax collector or a town treasurer, they're gonna, she's gonna stay through our, closing our fiscal year, which is the end of this month, by the time we do the audit, get the audit done and everything else. He says what they will do then is come in and do a thirty-one day audit, so that would be for the month of July, but it's gonna cost more than four thousand dollars, so we'd have to go out to bid anyways, so we will put that out to bid and have that done. And it's not because, um, Sherry's leaving, it's just because of all the things you said. There's been a lot of change, both in the school department and up here, uh, and with two treasurers in the last five years. And Mr. Smith even said it himself last year at the joint meeting between the selectmen, the school board, and the finance committee, he said after five years, you need another set of eyes to come in and take a look. Uh, this is his really busy time of year, so if we can get somebody that's not doing audits all over the place, who wants to come in and do an audit just on, uh, you know, overseeing and making sure that everything's okay, then I think it's well worth doing. But, again, we have to find out what it's gonna cost first.
Yeah, that, and I mean, with the way the, the economy is, I'm sure people are hungry for the business, so.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure we can find somebody that's willing to come in and do that one job, and then Mr. Smith has a contract to continue on with us, so, um, but yeah, but Mr. Smith is also willing to do it, he's willing to bid on it too, but I think if we have somebody else bid on it, um, to have, come in for a one-time thing, that might be a good idea.
Yeah, I think this, this, the whole idea is to, to get away from the status quo and get somebody else outside to look at it, you know, that's my, my idea.
Well, by having it also just be a one-time audit, when the, it wasn't just simply put in an ad, it was actual letters sent out, the state of Maine lists off the twenty-five or thirty different auditing firms that are registered with the state, so when we went out to bid, Lorraine looked through that list, and she sent actual letters saying, hey, we need an auditor, are you interested in bidding to be our auditor? And she sent them to the firms that were within, you know, an hour and a half, um, within geography, and about an hour and a half away. If it's just a one-time thing, we could certainly send out letters of interest to a much broader range, 'cause they wouldn't be needing to contact back and forth, if it's just a one-time thing. So we can ex, expand that out, you know, to not just York and Cumberland County, but also into Oxford and- but also into Oxford and, and some of the, you know-
Or in the Portland press parlor.
Right.
Yeah.
And see if we can find-
Yeah.
But the, um, but if it was a, for the auditing contract, to have somebody who's in a roostic be your auditor, it doesn't make any sense, 'cause we need to have them be able to come down fairly regularly to, to work with us in person.
Yeah, I ju, I just think it'd be a good idea, like, like Ted said, and I guess Mr. Smith told you, after five years, you know, it's time to have somebody go over it.
Yeah, and he just told me last week that very, very often when a treasurer or a tax collector leaves at the end of a fiscal year-
Yeah.
-they come back and do a second audit over and above the annual audit, just to make sure that from the time you close the books until the time the person leaves, that everything is still good.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you.
Any other business? Okay, we have some announcements. What do you have for announcements, Ted?
Um, I think I'm good.
You're good?
I think so.
Okay. Um, announced that there will be a bottle and can drive to benefit the Owls this Saturday at the transfer station. Um, the Owls is the older, wiser, liberated senior group that meets here at the Town Hall, and they are taking a bus trip this fall, and to help make that affordable for all the seniors in our community, um, they will be collecting bottles and cans to help supplement that cost, so that's this Saturday at the transfer station. The fire department is hosting a, um, motorcycle ride on Saturday, July twenty-second, it's to benefit Toys for Tots, and I believe it's twenty-fourth, sorry, twenty-fourth? Of course it is, it's seventeenth, twenty-fourth. July twenty-fourth, um, I believe it starts at ten A.M., Ed? Ten A.M. at Wild Willys?
No, Wild Willys, that's not it.
Ten, okay, and what is the cost for that, Ed?
Ten dollars.
Ten dollars. So ten dollars, you get your ride with a bunch of wonderful people from the fire department, um, and you support Toys for Tots, which really does a lot of great work right here in Acton come the holiday season, so that's a good thing. Little personal, not really personal, but something close to my heart, Acton Fair is coming up, August twenty-sixth through the twenty-ninth, and for those of you that have entered before, our entry books came in the mail this week. For those of you who have not entered anything into the fair before, this is a personal plea. Last year, I don't know if anyone noticed, but when you walked around the exhibit halls, very few exhibits were entered by Acton residents, and what a shame, because it's the Acton Fair. So I don't know if anyone's familiar with how the fair works, but you can enter anything from baked goods to home handicrafts to vegetables and fruits you've grown, um, flower arrangements, Lorraine's gonna be doing one, a book award, the one this year, 'cause I, she told me she would, and I'm gonna hold her to it. Um, it's a great opportunity, it's just good fun, and there's very small little cash prizes should you win, things like three dollars, two dollars, one dollar, but more importantly, you get to have a ribbon, and when people are walking around the fair, things have come from the people of Acton, so I am looking to bring home a bevy of blue this year, I'm hoping, so please come join me, and if you have any questions and you wanna look through a, um, an entry book, I would be happy to share mine and show you and give you the contact people. Um, last announcement that I have is that we are gonna be holding interviews for the treasurer's position on Monday and Tuesday of next week. Um, resumes are due in by noon on Monday, and we will have our first interviews on Monday afternoon, followed by Tuesday. We want to have them quickly and move on it quickly, so that whoever comes into the position can work with Sherry for the last ten days that she's here, to get a grip on what needs to happen and, and how to do the job, so, um, that will be happening with there. There is Thirteenth Street Road Association this Saturday at ten here at the Town Hall, and then next Saturday, Loon Pond is at eight A.M., and, uh, Mousam Lake is at nine A.M. I believe Loon Pond is here at eight, and Mousam Lake is nine A.M. at the fairgrounds, uh, yes, at the fairgrounds. So those are lake associations coming up. Um, Holly?
Uh, if I remember correctly, on the calendar, it's, you know, twentieth, eighteenth, or bridge repair act.
Yeah.
Is that a public hearing?
It is. Yeah, come on.
The bridge repair for, can-
Yeah.
Yes, there's a public hearing on the Bulge, what is it, Bulge Dam Bridge? What is it?
It's Bulge, Bulge Farm Bridge.
Bulge, okay, and that is on July twentieth at what time?
Six.
Six P.M.?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Holly, for reminding me of that, so-
Well, just report that Ted and I went to the Great East Lake Association meeting last Saturday, outdoors, in the pouring rain, and Larissa went to the one here in the Town Hall.
Sensibly inside.
[laughing]
And the lakes are looking good. I mean, Wilson Lake Association had great things to report, they had a lake watershed survey done and are moving forward on that, they've identified sites that are really of great detriment to the lake and are working on getting those fixed up, um, and they also had a big conversation about road associations, they have a couple of roads that need a lot of work to help maintain water quality, and they are going to be moving forward with forming road associations, so that's good news as well.
And I think Ted mentioned that he was very impressed with the work that Great East Lake Association is doing.
I was, yeah.
He was not aware of the many activities that they have to protect the lake.
No, they're broken down into committees, just like the town is, they had a committee that goes and do, does the water quality, they have a committee that counts loons, they have a committee that watches the watershed, um, and they're, they're just heavily involved, and, and they all came in and gave reports, just like we do at, uh, annual town meeting or at town meetings. And I was very impressed, and they're all volunteers, and I think they're doing a great job, and from what I hear, the lake is one of the most pristine around.
It's a great lake.
Yeah.
Um, now, did they give the loon count for Great East?
Yeah, two, two setting pairs, uh, one had a hatch and the other one didn't, uh, there was no sign of a hatch.
So they have one chick?
As far as they know.
So Wilson Lake has two adults with a chick and then one lone adult, so it looks like Great East is winning as far as the number of adults, but it's got their neck and neck on chicks, so, um, we'll get to see what Loon Pond and Mousam, any news from Mousam? Do you guys have a chick this year?
I have a chick. We've got two.
No chick from Mousam? No?
We had, we had a pair of, um, nesting loons, but I called them, we were really excited about it, and, um, between Sunday night when we saw them in the nest and Monday morning they're gone, and we think it was nature.
Yep. Oh, well, better luck next year, Mousam.
Well, we're thinking about building a loo, a loon island-
Yes.
-for next year, because they nested right out on the peninsula, and then they're subject to natural.
Yep, and weight and so forth. The, Wilson Lake built a loon island this year as well, so they're hoping for good luck next year. All right.
And make a motion to adjourn.
I will second, all in favor?
Aye. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.